That's what I figured out last time, last week. It was bad. They're up there with the bucket. They're up there with the bucket load.
Budgeting the flag of the United States of America and to their republic which saves one nation under God in this world looking justice.
Public hearing casino operators license application renewed. Chief isn't here.
No.
Okay.
I did speak to him ahead of time.
No concerns? Okay. What's wish of the board?
They're standing. I wanted to say something.
He's just letting us know they're here. Hey, well, I call the public hearing to a close. Action in the minutes of February seventeenth.
Make motion.
Those in favor? Chest missed to the agenda.
I've done it, sir.
Public comment. Something's going on here. Casino operators license renewal application renewal. All those in favor? Close. Hermann introduction future town office architectural design.
All right, so we, the folks from Hermann, the architect company, we're gonna try and get them on teams. Are they trying to log on or?
No, he should have automatic access and I see him here.
So he was just going to do with the board a quick hello, this is who we are.
There he is.
Yep, they're here. Welcome.
Make sure that I've clicked my mute button. Nice to to join all of you this evening.
How are you?
Hi.
Hey. Whoa.
So you're here with the board of selectmen. Of course, there's an audience here as well. I prepped them that they were just gonna do a meet and greet tonight and maybe answer some quick questions.
Sounds great.
Happy to do it.
Well, go ahead. Do you guys want to?
Sure. Okay, we're, yeah, excellent. No, we're at that point here. Very good. So just to start off, my name is Mark Lee. I'm a an architect at Hermann. We're a full-service architecture engineering firm and based in Auburn, Maine, with several offices throughout New England. Delighted to be be part of this effort. It's great to be working so close to the office too and supporting the Oxford community and so I'm also the CEO of the company. So you have full access, I guess, to to enjoy the support that Hermann will make sure this project is a success and that's our pledge. And so so with that, I'll also turn it over to my colleague, Will Gatchell.
Good evening. Thanks. Now, I'll just echo what Mark said. We're thrilled to be able to work with you on this on this project and grateful for the opportunity. So I'm an architect and lead the municipal projects for Hermann and will lead this as as project manager and lead architect. And I did. I did see the site yesterday. I was up at Sunday River. So I was able to take a quick peek. Adam had forwarded me the plot plan a week or so ago and so I was able to kind of get eyes on it and we're intending to have our our visit next week, actually, to to start our review.
Any questions?
Right. So I mean, we're gonna be planning on moving forward with the site studies and so forth and just keep the board in the loop and keep coming back to you when we, you know, as we progress forward.
This is the site right off twenty-six, right?
Yeah. So I advised them that they are you. We had discussed the site off twenty-six Park Road, but I advise them that the one on twenty-six seemed to be a little bit more of the priority than the other. So that's what they were gonna look at first, but I was hoping that if there was other input tonight, maybe you guys could let them know that as well. But that's that's what they're working from is look at room twenty-six first. There was also a comment about next to the fire station. But I think we'll explore this first if the board's okay with that.
Yeah. I would be. One right there was brought from the fire station up the road.
That's one was Skiavi that he.
Right, right. Yep. Sounds good.
Very well.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Excellent. Yes, nice to nice to meet all of you. We'll look forward to working with you in the weeks to come here and get this off to a great start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening, Al.
Thank you. Good night. Okay. Food sovereignty ordinance discussion.
So I was contacted by Selectman Dillingham regarding food sovereignty ordinance. I did a little bit of research with Beth here and we found that it looks like back in twenty seventeen, you folks did have a conversation about this once before. I doesn't, not that it didn't get traction according to the minutes, it just looks like it, you know, fell a little wayside and so now it's coming up now. Not knowing whereabouts you guys had left it and where thoughts were, I provided a draft food sovereignty ordinance that I've I've worked on in the past. So that's all in front of you for discussion to see if this is something you want further development on or where you'd like to go.
Well, firstly, I say we should move forward with it.
I would agree. I brought it to you. I don't know. I don't remember when the state passed the law. Probably my remembrance was before two thousand something or not.
Yep.
And that may be why it didn't gain traction. It was probably about four or five years ago that it passed. This isn't related to the most recent law change. They had the right to food laws. That's totally different than than this.
Yep, that's my understanding. Yeah. I did include a copy of the statute in here for your reference. Is this something you folks would like me to make sure makes its way to the town meeting warrant then is that over?
Yes, I would.
Talking about it.
I would make that a motion if it needs to be in motion format.
Okay.
Make the motion that you add the Food Sovereignty Act ordinance for the town of Oxford to the agenda.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor? Close. Fire Department Command Vehicle Repair and Replacement Discussion.
All right. So the fire chief is here tonight to partake in this discussion. In short, what's going on is the expedition that we have as the command vehicle for the fire department is up for inspection next month in March. And looking at that, apparently, it's gonna need about six thousand dollars worth of rust repairs on the vehicle rocker panels and border panels and so forth. That's a lot of money to put into a vehicle that's up for replacement this year. So the reason that we're having this discussion tonight is the chief has found a potential replacement vehicle. It's a Chevy Tahoe that would be available. But there's not a lot of other things available right now. You guys are familiar with vehicle market. So asking tonight if the board would be interested in allowing us to use the fund balance account to purchase a replacement vehicle that he's got some specs in here for so we can replace it now rather than fix it, put it back in service, and then purchase something else through the budget process. Did you have a total cost, chief, on the vehicle and the equipment and so forth? We had worked that out.
Yes, through professional vehicles, me and Brunkford will do all the install and cabinetry and consoles plus the vehicle. It's fifty-eight thousand. So I can get you official numbers in a couple of days. The vehicle is forty-six. And that's a special service vehicle, all pre-wired for bright sirens and all that stuff.
The only caveat to this is the fact the vehicle is at a dealership in New York.
Yes.
The two thousand eleven, did we buy that new?
Yes.
Yeah.
So would this go up to bid?
So the intention of this is to waive the bid process because of the availability of other vehicles. The chief could speak to. He's reached out to several, well, a handful of dealerships.
I spoke to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna sit up. He gave me a bunch of dealers that he dealt with through the county chair. I reached out to them. They know how to make those vehicles in this current year. So they stopped it because of the the computer chip issue. So they're waiting for the two thousand thirteen, the two dealers I talked to. I reached out to Tom Printup, the Holland Fire Chief, who just purchased the twenty-one Tahoe out of the same company in New York. I called them. We have eleven sitting in the parking lot right now waiting to be shipped to wherever wants them. And they are the special service package vehicles ready to go. You just gotta add your legs and fire it.
But when you reached out to local Dodge, they're at four.
Dealership, they're twenty-five to thirty weeks out. They can't get them right now. Couple other dealerships, Dodge, right up here in South Paris. They can't even get a hold of anything right now.
So what we're kind of running into, and that's why we're bringing this up, is it looks like if we order something, it's gonna be a significant amount of time. This vehicle's available.
All the dealership that tell me twenty-five to thirty weeks, give it take a week to do.
I would concur with that, just based on our dealings with the county. They actually had a a vehicle from one of the dealerships on order and it was just, the order was canceled. I don't know how many weeks in it was by the, they're just, they're not gonna get to it in the factory in the time what they they had. So they just canceled the order. And so, I mean, you could be waiting ten, twelve weeks and then get notified. You're not gonna get the vehicle at all. So we've had a very difficult time finding vehicles.
According to Bill Afrin from the dealership at Albany, there's seventeen on the ground right now. It's black, white, and red. And they are going. People are finding out he has them, so they're getting called. The one that we got is the two thousand eleven.
Yes.
In twenty twenty, when Bud Ashland was here, we put seven thousand six hundred in the bodywork then. And we've talked about keeping it an extra year and then capital replacing it. Then Adam said, well, we waited another year and put it in. And now I need another six thousand to replace more body. And that's just to get a sticker. There's still other places that should be fixed, but I, twenty miles on that, well, that's a sweep. Make a motion to go.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just to clear.
You're not voting.
Just to be clear about the fund balance, that's all. Is it funding as to fund balance is acceptable?
I assume you don't have that much left in the part of our budget.
Well, not without making it dry.
I mean, we've got three more months to get through, so.
So do your emotion.
I make a motion that, do you need one for to waive the bid process? I make a motion to waive the bid process and to take the money out of the fund balance.
I got it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
King Street Sidewalk. Continued.
So at the at the last meeting, at the last meeting, we discussed the King Street Sidewalk. I brought to the board that we had received new estimate from Rob Prue, the engineer we've been working with on that, that it went from one hundred and twenty-five thousand up to one hundred and sixty-five thousand. I had a discussion after the meeting last week and I, I guess I wanna, you know, fall on my sword, if you will. I think I may have misunderstood the intention of the board at a previous meeting when we discussed this. At a, as I put in my notes back in May of last year, when we had a discussion about this, I wanted to clarify that the board at that time had given the manager, me, permission to move forward with getting the, working with the engineer and putting this out to bid and so forth. And I was interpreting that that did not include funding of funding of the project, meaning I could advertise it as funding is available, we can do it when the bids come back. So when I presented this to you folks at the last meeting and asked, do we want to put this off till town meeting or do we want to do it now? I, you know, we got a little bit murky in the fact that, well, if I've already got permission from a previous vote in a previous meeting, then in funding was available, then that's what should have happened. And there should have only been a discussion about the difference of what forty thousand dollars in the estimate. So I just wanna make sure we get these sidewalks done. I know this is something that's been on the docket, if you will, for quite some time with the capital plans and so forth. So for clarification, to make sure that I'm doing what the board wishes here, knowing that, is this something, when we put it out to bid, that we want to advise that funding is available now and from fund balance? Or do we need to continue and say this is gonna be part of the capital improvement plan for this coming year? I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, Sharon, or not, but.
So when this came up, that's, we did vote to have the money come from the capital fund balance account. That way, the project could go out to bid and the project would be done. So after we took the vote last week, I got home and I started thinking about it and pulled my file and I said, no, that's not what we did. And so I think that the vote we took last week to bring it to the budget committee was irrelevant because we had already voted to take the money out of the capital fund balance. And that is what I think should happen so that that sidewalk can get done. And we don't have to wait until after July to do it. So that's what our intent was before. And in the fall, Rob didn't advise last year that we we do it because of the cost of the asphalt, but that's just gonna keep going up anyway. So the longer we put that off, the more expensive that's gonna be. So I really support our our motions from before to take the money from fund balance to get the project.
How much more money do we have in the golden goose account?
Well, we've got one point eight in that fund balance account. It's right here from the previous, when we when we voted on the command vehicle. That's just in the fund balance account. That's not in surplus accounts, well, undesignated fund bal, other balances. So I think we can more than cover that.
We already, we already appropriated so much anyways. It's just the forty thousand dollars more.
It it would just be the difference.
Only I go over the forty thousand.
Right.
And that's what we were gonna put up to the budget, right?
No, we were going, the the vote we took last week was to put the entire amount to the, the entire project, the amount to the budget committee. But we had already voted.
Back last year.
Back last year to take that money from the fund balance. And at that time, the estimate was one twenty-five. Now the estimate is one sixty-five. So those sidewalks have been sitting like that now for forty years and they're, I know you're not. So I just want, I just want the board to confirm that, yes, we are going to take the money from fund balance.
Just the extra, right?
Right.
Because the other was already committed.
Committed, right.
Because when the bids come in, I still am gonna have to present the bids to the board anyway and say, this is what we've got and you folks will award the bids. The difference is only we're saying funding is available now versus later. That'll change how people bid on the project. So, I mean.
When I made that motion, the extra forty thousand comes out of.
Yes, I'll make a motion that the additional amount of the sidewalk, when the bids come in, will come out of the fund balance with the other one twenty-five we already committed.
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I apologize for my misunderstanding of that earlier.
Thank you.
I think, didn't we do that on the, no, you here when we did that?
Yeah.
Okay. What a Suckman Budget Committee Joint Budget Session. I'm gonna turn this over to the town manager.
All right, so I have presents for everybody. These are your budget books. If you can take, open them and pass them down. Trees were sacrificed for this.
For a little too.
All right, so tonight with, this I understand is the first time that everybody here in this room is gonna see this. So I am gonna try and keep it somewhat brief for you. Is that everybody?
It's just Henry.
Yeah, Henry and we had an extra. So some parts of this are gonna look a little bit similar to what you've seen in the past, but one of the things that we'll see that's a little bit different is we've got the budget calendar right on the top and then there is a summary page that goes over the entire, you know, the totals that were in the budget. And once we go even further, you've got each of the sections for each budget. Like if I pick on administration, for instance, you'll see that there is budget sheets in there. The this year's proposed budget is darkened a little bit, so it stands out, so you can see it. A lot more explanations in the margins in here. So if we say that we're looking for, we have memberships or something that we need to pay for, it lists out what those memberships are, what costs. Major items, there's a whole bunch of supportive information back here, like even even the cost of living. There's a print off in here that shows you what the projected cost of living is this year. Shows you what the health insurance rates, retirement rates and so forth. So that way you know where my numbers came from. I didn't pull them out of the sky. So in that, and it's that way from each of the departments. And so when we look at the overall total, you're probably gonna be a little bit, a little bit surprised. But this year, after all is said and done, we're looking at a municipal, a municipal operations budget decrease of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Now, take that with a little bit of a grain of salt. What I mean by that is that there was some things that mechanically could simply be changed throughout this budget on how, you know, how things were calculated and handled. We're just doing them in a more efficient way. This, but they're still getting done. So, you know, this is not cutting services. This is not doing any of that. It's just doing things a little bit more efficiently. And not that they were bad before, just doing them more efficiently. So when you flip through here, you're gonna notice also some changes. Code enforcement, I've created its own budget for code enforcement as its own department. This is that department, even though it is one person, has expenses and so forth that don't really belong in the administration, in my opinion. Police does see it's an increase, but I've added animal control to the police department because the police chief supervises the animal control ops and oversees them. There's an increase in highway, fire and EMS. Those were two separate budgets supervised by the same chief. So we put them together into one budget so that everything can be kept track of there. One of the things that tore my eyeballs out when I started here last year was this public safety building had its own budget, but the Northern Fire Station was in the fire department's budget. And that confused me a lot. So I figured if it confused me, it probably confused other people. So what we've done is we've taken Northern Fire Station out of the municipal, excuse me, out of the fire budget and created a public safety buildings budget that covers the public safety buildings and put those together. So you can see that in there. Recreation is a small increase there. General assistance, transfer station, there's an increase there. For transfer station, a reminder that we combined those together. I think it was last year was the first year that happened. Sewer sees a small decrease, sees a decrease. Take that with a grain of salt in the sense that, again, we have the North End Sewer on the other end of town that was being paid for. It's a sewer utility, so we combine that with the sewer department budget and those can all come, it can come from the same place. So the other piece of that was the North End Sewer and how that was being budgeted, we're just doing more efficiently. And when we get there, I can talk to you more about why that's been decreased. The municipal budget, which includes things like insurance and so forth, does see an increase. Debt service, excuse me, that sees a decrease. Debt service sees a decrease as well. But the debt service is because we've had some loans that are expiring. So they're coming, we're just, we're not gonna complain. Boards and committees sees a small increase. Capital plans are in the back of the book and just like you see with your budgets for operations, capital plans are all five-year plans. There's a master sheet on the top that has all the collective amounts broken down by year. But if you flip to the department, like say the police department, for instance, it'll have the two police cruisers that they would like to replace, you know, will be listed there and those totals are there. Backup information is also in there for many of these items. The capital items are all listed and have funding recommendations from me on how I'm recommending that we handle these things. Some of them are gonna be frankly, the selectmen, you know, funding through fund balance and some of them are going to, you know, to go to town meeting and ask for the money there. So the capital and then also you have, you also have your revenues in the back as well. So my hope and my thought is, I know this is a different format and everybody here is entertaining me and allowing us to try and do something different. I'm hoping that we can, you know, work through this together collectively. I think both of us sitting here communicating with each other is gonna be a lot more efficient. Department heads only have to come in, you know, one time presumably to present to, you know, collectively. I don't know how you folks are gonna feel about it, but my hope is, is that, you know, like next week, the budgets that we're gonna go over, that, you know, let's see, what do we have? On the tenth, we're gonna go over fire, EMS and public safety building budgets, including their capital budgets. I'm hoping that between now and next Thursday, if everybody can look at those budgets, if you have any screaming questions or even just wanna talk to me about them, I'm happy to do so. That way, when we sit down to do our budget meeting, we're ready to to efficiently move along. At the conclusion of each meeting, if the boards are comfortable, maybe that would be a good time to consider voting on those budgets if you feel like you're ready. And then we can just chug along, you know, through each meeting. I also have stretched this out. I've put a little bit of wiggle room in here. So if you guys look at this calendar and you think things are moving along and you wanna compress it together, just tell me. I just didn't wanna, I didn't wanna overburden people and make you have to be here until eleven o'clock at night. So if you think this can be more aggressive, you just need to tell me. So again, I know I threw a lot at you and things look a little bit different, but at the very least, I I really hope that you find this book to be very comprehensive and I hope you find it to, you know, just be a step in the right direction. So so with that, I really look forward to seeing everybody next Thursday at five so we can get started on fire and EMS. Anybody have any thoughts or questions?
So you next Thursday as the organizational meeting for the budget phase.
You see, why not?
Yep. All right.
Henry said you, Andrew couldn't be here tonight, but I think he said you wanted to be chair, right?
Yeah, but I have an uncle on here.
Is he sitting to your right by any chance?
He is.
Doesn't matter how much you hide your head, it's still gonna happen. We greatly appreciate it, Sam. Well, that's all I have.
That's it.
I'll be up here, bud.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys, very much. Amenhead report.
I I thought that was gonna take longer, so I didn't schedule anybody.
Yep. Town manager's report.
The only things I wanna pass along, we've had some challenges here in the building with the elevator. It is out of service right now and will be out of service for a little while. We're working with the repair people. Hopefully, we'll have that back together soon. So for now, people just can't use the elevator. Also, I've sent emails to the board, FYI. Been some changes and promotions in the building. Diana's retiring, as everybody knows, on April first. I wish her luck. Sad to see her go, but Beth will be taking her position in the back office and then Wendy will be taking Beth's position up front.
Right.
So we're excited about those changes.
Very good.
Yes. Yes.
No. Stuck in items.
We addressed the launching pad up above my house, you argued earlier.
Yeah.
Between my house and your house, uh, what do you guys coming on? And, and I really don't think there's gonna be much I can do right now, other than put the salt to it. Uh, culvert needs to be cleaned out and or changed, it might need a bigger culvert in there at some point. Um, but that's, we can't do that now, so.
Right.
There's a lot of launching pads around.
Yeah, but there, I'm up to this one.
You say launching pad?
Yes.
I only, one other thing for the Oxvilles note, uh, wish the Oxvilles boys basketball team good luck this coming Saturday playing for the, hopefully their first gold ball, they, they've been there once before and didn't win, so, uh, I have a nephew that plays on that team, so, uh, we're looking forward to it.
Thing be great. Hey, now, in the packet I see here about.
I don't see him here.
Huh?
I don't see him here.
You don't see him?
No, just an FYI.
Okay. Sign warrants, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred, one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three. Take care, Pete.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So one of the other items in there that you guys have seen is the CMP pole permit that we approved a couple weeks ago, but it just needed his signatures.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion sign warrants ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred, one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Do I hear a motion?
So long.
Second.
All in favor?